Good afternoon. I'd like to call the June 23 Caucus meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public notification of this meeting was done in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act and confirmed with Ms. Brock.
Yes ma'am, it was.
All right. And at this time we have, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the caucus.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda for caucus.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next on our agenda is the council members' discussion. I had a request from Ms. Brown. She wanted to talk about some things that she was not able to talk about at the last meeting because she was out of town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just realized the council member discussion was on here, but it's been on here for a while.
Right. We put it in as a place.
Okay, because I thought that we had to list it, the discussion and FOIA and all that stuff, but no, this is fine. Okay. All right. Last caucus meeting, the Gullah Farmers Co-op presented, and I would like to share something with the folks here and at home. At the Finance Committee meeting, Mr. Glover stated in the April Finance Committee meeting that the co-op was selling food to the school district. And after the April meeting, someone in the audience contacted me, we don't have anybody to be honest to me, and asked that I reach out to the school district. So I did just that. And they had told me they hadn't bought food from the co-op in two years. But a few weeks later after that, they contacted the co-op and reached out to them, and now they are going to be buying food. So that's a good thing.
All right. At this time, we will go, we're going to go in executive, I need a motion regarding executive session. Let me read.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Before we do that, let me respond to what has been brought on the table.
Uh huh.
If I said that they have contracted with, I thought I said they were contracted with the school district. They are entering into a contract with the school district. They have not sold anything at this time, I do know that, since the pandemic. But they are working on a contract with the school district. I thought I said that, but if I was not clear, let me make sure I'm clear now, that they are entertaining a contract with the school district at this time. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
What I was saying though, okay, we're going to need to argue this.
Okay. All right. At this time, I need a motion to go into executive session. I will read the items that we, after I have a motion and a second, I'll read those.
I'll make my motion.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Larson. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Brown to go in executive session. These items would be discussed. Under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A1, to engage in discussions incident to employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of a person regulated by a public body. This is the annual performance review of our county administrator. Number seven, under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A1, to engage in discussions incident to employment, appointment, compensation of a person regulated by a public body. Discussion of criteria and process for procurement of outside legal counsel. Under South Carolina Code 30-4-70A1, to engage in discussions incident to the employment, appointment, compensation of a person regulated by a public body. Discussion of process for procurement of outside legal counsel to advise counsel on development agreement. Under number nine, under South Carolina 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending litigation, Hilton Head versus Beaufort County law enforcement fee litigation. And number 10, pursuant to South Carolina Code 30-4-70A2, legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements to Fusky Island Ferry Services. There may be matters to arise out of executive session. Any further discussion before we adjourn to, before we go to executive session?
No.
I'm sorry. Yes. All in favor of going into executive session? By show of hands? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Which room are we going in?
Down there.
Down the hall. Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. We have been in executive session and we do have an item arising out of executive session. I would like to take a motion, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that council authorize the county attorney to arrange for interviews to be conducted by the executive committee with the following attorneys number four, seven, and nine from the list discussed in executive session and for the executive committee to make recommendations to council on an attorney or law firm to provide legal advice to council concerning the pending Pine Island development agreement and Ramsey Farm development agreement.
Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion?
Could we just point out to the public who's on the executive committee in case they want to know?
Yes. The executive committee are the chairman of each committee such as natural resources, public facilities, all of our committees' finance. That's the executive committee. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, by show of hands to approve that motion as read. And it is unanimous. Thank you. We are now adjourned from executive session. Please rise. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance by Ms. Tavernick.
Oh, yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
My invocation today will focus on reflections about Flag Day which we just had and the upcoming Fourth of July. Almighty God, we thank you for the flag, our symbol of our unity and our ideals. Our flag's colors, red, white, and blue, each carry symbolic meaning. Red represents heartiness and valor. White symbolizes purity and innocence, and blue signifies vigilance, perseverance, and justice. As we look upon the stars on the flag, we are reminded of your creation and the vastness of your love. As we see the stripes, we remember the sacrifices made to build this nation and the values we strive to uphold: justice, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Let us always join together to give thanks for the freedoms we celebrate and enjoy. We remember with gratitude those who fought for our liberty and those who continue to serve to protect it. We pray for unity and understanding among all our citizens and for wisdom and guidance for our leaders at the federal, state, and local levels. May our nation always strive to live up to the ideals upon which it was founded, and may we become a beacon of hope and freedom for the world. Guide us towards peace and prosperity and help us to live worthy of the freedoms we enjoy. Amen.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Tavernick. This meeting was advertised in accordance with the state law Freedom of Information Act. I'll confirm that with Ms. Brock and Ms. Ashley. And at this time, we will look at the agenda, and I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion by Councilman Dawson. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Vice Chairman Tavernick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the agenda, by show of hands. And it is unanimous to approve the agenda. All right. We have the administrator's report. We have a lot of good news tonight.
Approval of minutes.
Oh, approval of minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Moore. I have a motion by Councilman Brown to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Councilman Larson. All in favor? Show of hands. All right. Those are approved. All right. Now we have some good news from our administrator. And other news, but really good news.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. First off, we'll start with employee recognitions this evening. We have from Risk Management, Daphne Butler.
Yes, Daphne's here. There you are. Come on up.
So, Daphne is our claims and insurance administrator. She's been with the county just over seven years. In summary of her duties, she administers the county's property and liability claims, processes insurance endorsements and invoices throughout the year, processes annual policy renewals, adjusts assets, reconciles insurance premiums, and keeps track of all the county's insurable assets. And if you know, that's an extensive portfolio of things you handle each and every day without flaw, I mean, no flaws, flawless. So, we appreciate that. Something unique to share, you're not a fan of the outdoors.
Oh, no.
So, that's it. So, the heat. Okay, I understand that. So, we'd like to recognize Daphne. Thank you for your service.
I would just like to say that it has been a good seven and a half years. I have been in several departments, so I got to know a lot of employees. My background is very extensive in a lot of their departments, which is a good thing, but I truly appreciate my time here. Thank you.
Okay, next we've got from the Department of Information Technology, or IT, Fotinia Wright Allen. I don't know if she's here tonight. Her position is IT Business Manager. She's been with the county for three years and nine months. Summary of job duties, as the IT Business Manager, she bridges the gap between IT operations and business. She oversees the planning, budgeting, and alignment of technology initiatives with the county's goals. Something unique about her to share, Fotinia loves to travel and explore new things. So, we appreciate her service. Okay, next up from Planning and zoning, we've got Kristin Forbes. So, her position is a long-range planner. Been with the county for two and a half years. Summary of her duties, she serves as the staff liaison for Historic Preservation Review Board, Cultural Protection Overlay Committee, and Planning Commission, creating agendas, staff reports, and minutes. She reviews text amendments and rezoning requests, and is currently working on the comprehensive plan updates. Something unique to share publicly, you stayed in a camper van for a week and traveled to Iceland.
Traveled around Iceland.
That's pretty cool. So, thanks for what you do.
It's been a great two and a half years. I hope you all will continue to have me for another two and a half, if not more.
Good afternoon. We have been in executive session and we do have an item arising out of executive session. I would like to take a motion, entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that council authorize the county attorney to arrange for interviews to be conducted by the executive committee with the following attorneys, number four, seven, and nine from the list discussed in executive session, and for the executive committee to make recommendations to council on an attorney or law firm to provide legal advice to council concerning the pending Pine Island Development Agreement and Ramsey Farm Development Agreement.
Do we have a second for that motion?
A second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion?
Could we just point out to the public who's on the executive committee, in case they want to know?
Yes. The executive committee are the chairman of each committee, such as natural resources, public facilities, all of our committees' finance. That's the executive committee. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing none, by show of hands, to approve that motion as read? And it is unanimous. Thank you. We are now adjourned from executive session. Please rise. I'd like to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance by Ms. Tavernick.
Oh, yes. Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Yes. My invocation today will focus on reflections about Flag Day, which we just had, and the upcoming Fourth of July. Almighty God, we thank you for the flag, our symbol of our unity and our ideals. Our flag's colors, red, white, and blue, each carry symbolic meaning. Red represents hardiness and valor. White symbolizes purity and innocence. And blue signifies vigilance, perseverance, and justice. As we look upon the stars on the flag, we are reminded of your creation and the vastness of your love. As we see the stripes, we remember the sacrifices made to build this nation and the values we strive to uphold: justice, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Let us always join together to give thanks for the freedoms we celebrate and enjoy. We remember with gratitude those who fought for our liberty and those who continue to serve to protect it. We pray for unity and understanding among all our citizens and for wisdom and guidance for our leaders at the federal, state, and local levels. May our nation always strive to live up to the ideals upon which it was founded, and may we become a beacon of hope and freedom for the world. Guide us towards peace and prosperity and help us to live worthy of the freedoms we enjoy. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Tavernick. This meeting was advertised in accordance with the state law Freedom of Information Act. I'll confirm that with Ms. Brock and Ms. Ashley. And at this time, we will look at the agenda, and I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Come on over.
I have a motion by Councilman Dawson. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Vice Chairman Tavernick. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor approval of the agenda, by show of hands? And it is unanimous to approve the agenda. All right. We have administrator's report. We have a lot of good news tonight.
Approval of minutes.
Oh, approval of minutes. I'm sorry, Mr. Moore. I'd like to...
A motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Brown to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Councilman Larson. All in favor? Show of hands? All right. Those are approved. All right. Now we have some good news from our administrator. And other news, but really good news.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Council. First off, we'll start with employee recognitions this evening. We have from Risk Management, Daphne Butler.
Yes, Daphne's here. There you are. Oh, yeah. Come on up.
So, Daphne is our Claims and Insurance Administrator. She's been with the county just over seven years. In summary of her duties, she administers the county's property and liability claims, processes insurance endorsements and invoices throughout the year, processes annual policy renewals, adjusts assets, reconciles insurance premiums, and keeps track of all the county's insurable assets. And if you know, that's an extensive portfolio of things you handle each and every day's and we're without flaw, I mean, no flaws, flawless. So, we appreciate that. Something unique to share, you're not a fan of the outdoors?
Oh, no.
So, that's it. So, the heat. Okay, I understand that. So, we'd like to recognize Daphne. Thank you for your service.
I would just like to say that it has been a good seven and a half years. I have been in several departments, so I got to know a lot of employees. My background is very extensive in a lot of the departments, which is a good thing. But I truly appreciate my time here.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we've got from the Department of Information Technology, or IT, Fotinia Wright Allen. I don't know if she's here tonight. Her position is IT Business Manager. She's been with the county for three years and nine months. Summary of job duties as the IT Business Manager, she bridges the gap between IT operations and business. She oversees the planning, budgeting, and alignment of technology initiatives with the county's goals. Something unique about her to share, Fotinia loves to travel and explore new things. So, we appreciate her service. Okay, next up, from Planning and Zoning, we've got Kristin Forbes. So, her position is a long-range planner, been with the county for two and a half years. Summary of her duties, she serves as the Staff Liaison for Historic Preservation Review Board, Cultural Protection Overlay Committee, and Planning Commission, creating agendas, staff reports, and minutes. She reviews text amendments and rezoning requests, and is currently working on the comprehensive plan updates. Something unique to share publicly, you stayed in a camper van for a week and traveled to Iceland.
Traveled around Iceland.
That's pretty cool. So, thanks for what you do.
Wow. It's been a great two and a half years. I hope you all will continue to have me for another two and a half, if not more.
So, that concludes our employee recognition. Next, I do have some positive news to tell council, which emailed you this earlier, but just for you all's awareness and for the public. This morning, the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank Board unanimously, by 6-0 vote, passed a resolution to approve the county's revised proposal for the Highway 278 project with the following conditions: the amended intergovernmental agreement, Beaufort County is responsible for the project overruns, and a 70-30 share with SC DOT. The SC, the CIB, will maintain their $120 million commitment to the project. Any project savings will come back to the State Infrastructure Bank, and the State Infrastructure Bank's funds are spent last. Subsequent approvals will include the SC DOT Commission and the Joint Bond Review Committee. We spoke with SC DOT Secretary Powell today, and of course, he's very positive, and I thought this was great news. So, we expect that will be a positive. We'd also like to thank our delegation, as well as Senator Davis, for their very strong support and a lot of effort to get this across the finish line. So, I want to make council aware of that. And then lastly, we'll have a workshop this Thursday on the 26th of June at the Bluffton Library, starting at 10 o'clock. Any questions? That concludes my...
Any questions or comments?
Can I have one, please?
Yes.
I know the county administrator just mentioned the delegation and Senator Davis, but I'd like to just mention the fact that Senator Davis has been with us on this project for years, is very well respected and admired in Columbia, and he has really been on board for what I just said, there to ensure that this project moves forwards through all the obstacles we encountered. So, my sincere thanks on behalf of this council to Senator Davis for the great work he did getting us to the final approval here with regard to this project. Thanks very much, Senator Davis.
Well said. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Councilman Glover?
Yeah, I did too everything that Larry just said, but I also want to commend the staff. You all did a tremendous job.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you again. All right. Moving along on the agenda, we now have public comment period. I would like to remind the public of the rules of the road when you make public comment. Each member of the public who is recognized shall limit their comments to three minutes and observe the following protocol: address the chairman, and in speaking, avoid disrespect to council and any personalities; confine themselves to questions under the jurisdiction of the council; be mindful and respectful of those who are present and others who may be watching on television. And we do have a microphone, so all will hear what you say. There's no reason to raise your voice at council, which we've had that happen in the past, and I know that won't happen tonight. I would like to point out to the public, too, there's going to be several public hearings tonight. So, I noticed there were some people that had some comments on Jennings Road. They can make those on number 18 under public hearing, if you'd rather. That's up to you either way. And so, here we go. We've got 12 people. We're going to give you three minutes each. Yes, we have another one?
No, I just say that if there's anyone here who haven't signed up, to speak, ask them to do so before you start this process.
Oh, sure. Is there anyone that has not signed up for public comment? There's still an opportunity to do that. All right. These are in order as they were signed in. Richard Mansfield, would you please come forward? And the next person after him is Leonard Brown. So, Richard Mansfield, zoning lands in.
Right.
Okay.
And y'all should have some handouts that the clerk's going to hand you.
You can go ahead and start.
Okay. As you said, my name is Richard Mansfield. I, in my career, I've had 45 years in engineering development. Twenty of those 45 years has been in civil engineering, where I have done due diligence for residential, commercial, industrial, and military development sites. Our concern for lands in right now is that we feel like the codes are not being adhered to. Lands in down around Fort Fremont consist of properties that are less than a quarter acre each. And here recently has come to our attention that there are parcels being bought up for the strict use to set them up as campsites, and we feel that that is a violation of the existing codes within the county. I did some research last night to support this, and looking under the code 3.1.60 Consolidated Use and 3.1.70 Land Use Definitions on the Residential. Those properties that are labeled as residential is for dwelling single-family detached units, not campers and RVs. Ninety percent of lands in consist of residents who are vested in the property. They have permanent structures there for them to come visit, either on a weekly basis, some are full-time residents. What we're having done now is people are buying up the property for the sole purpose to set those lots up as campsites. There is a transect zoning within the Consolidated Use that refers to 3.1.30, which is a transect zone. 3.2.40 T2 Rule zoning is for large lots, residential farms, parks, woodlands, grasslands, trails, and open space. The purpose of those transects is to stabilize the neighborhoods and maintain neighborhood stability. By having these campsites come in, that is disrupting the resident atmosphere. In looking at that, looking at just the first three requirements under the T2, primitive camping/campgrounds are permitted, however, there are restrictions that must be followed. It is possible for the codes to be followed if you have less than a quarter acre lot. The first one, minimum site area must be consisted of three acres. Second, buffers shall be screened with a 100-foot wide buffer next to all property lines. Stay time is not to exceed 60 days within 90 days. This is being violated.
Sir, your time has expired. Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next is Leonard, Mr. Leonard Brown. If you'd just state your name, too, please.
My name is Leonard Brown. I'm standing on behalf of my dad, Thomas Brown. I'm here in reference to speaking on the Focus Right-Away Project in Big Estate Road. Supposedly, I also have a petition here of those that oppose of that plan, being that they, most that have signed this list didn't know about the plan, the meetings, okay? And along with knowing about the meetings, they didn't know how the plan was coming through. This right-away project is supposed to be coming through my dad's property. He wasn't notified about that until a couple of weeks ago with a certified letter. There's been a certain group, committee, whatever, they've been having him along and not informing him as well, knowing what the project was about. My thing is, this has to do with improving drainage, the safety of the community, more for the safety of the community, no doubt. But when it comes to taking our property to have that done, I find that a problem with that, simply because, you know, do you want to improve the drainage? But the county's doing their job on the drainage, but the state is not doing their job on the state road of Big Estate. So, now, and that's the reason why a lot of property owners off of Big Estate Road have drainage problems, because the state is not doing their job. They haven't done their job there for at least two hurricane seasons. So, now, along with that being said, this sidewalk coming through, it has to improve the drainage. For the longest, they've been talking about tapping in with Beaufort-Jasper, the water system, okay? And I'm quite sure with them forcibly appraising our property for this drainage system, Beaufort-Jasper will later come in, whoever knows when, and then, we think in terms of properties being residual income, generational wealth, okay? Later on, this property, this piece of property being sold, and then Beaufort-Jasper comes in, and then my family, for generations, are debt, at debt for Beaufort-Jasper County, knowing that they bought our property. And this is my comment and my complaint, along with the list of homes, supposedly homeowners that supposedly want this project done, but they're opposing it. And this is, no disrespect to you, Mr. Dawson, that you said the plan was...
Give it to the chairman.
Chairman.
Chairwoman.
We'll take that. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, the next person on the list is Mr. Arnold Brown, and after him is Mr. Herbert Glaze, former council member.
Good evening, and thank you for your service, and thank you for the prayer that you laid. In reference to Pine Island and the CPO, I think it comes down to a criteria for making a decision. If I was in your position, I would have a criteria for making a decision. And the first criteria that I would, the first one, professionally speaking, when I had to make a decision, was based on quality, delivery, and price. And I think if you go to Amazon today, when you shop on Amazon, you look at quality, delivery, and price. If you needed an HVAC system in this hot weather, you would look at quality, delivery, and price. If you were buying a home, you would look at location, location, location. Those are the various criterias. For the criteria as far as upholding the CPO, community recommendation. Okay? The community has spoken, the community has highly recommended that they support their CPO, and that's a very important factor, and it should not be ignored. The next item is planning recommendation. The planning committee made a unanimous decision to uphold the current zoning, the CPO. So, as members of the council, I would think that you would hold up Beaufort County Planning Commission, Department, I'm not sure what it's called, but you would uphold that and support them in their decision. The next item is legal and constitutional. Some folks have said that, well, this is not constitutional. What is your evidence of that? Based on laws that have been, all has gone to the Supreme Court, it is constitutional for zoning to be upheld. South Carolina law, United States Constitution, it creates another problem to reverse it. Spot zoning is not a violation of the Fifth Amendment of taking someone's land. If a land was zoned commercial, a shopping center, let's say where Staple is, and you rezonate the farming, that would be taking someone's land. That would be a violation of the Fifth Commandment, Amendment. So, follow the, I suggest following the precedents that's already been set, not establish a new precedent that will create problems for everyone in the future, and it will open up a can of worms when other builders or developers come forward and say that we want to change. Based on what? But have a criteria that everyone can follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next is Mr. Glaze. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Herbert Glaze. I served in your capacity for 20 years. At that time, I represented District One. Today, I am before you, not just as a concerned citizen, a taxpayer, but someone who deeply cares about our youth and community spaces. It's troubling to see our children locked out of recreation parks on weekends, particularly Burton Wells. Something as faulty or intentionally restrictive, lock is depriving them of safety and health outlets. Additionally, I'm concerned about the enforcement of the code enforcement scheme as though it's falling apart. Something is happening. When standards are not upheld, it sends a message that some neighborhoods matter less than others. I'm urged, this council, to investigate these issues and ensure that all citizens, children in all areas, have equal recreation spaces, especially, especially on the weekend when they are needed most. Remember, in observing the seat that you are serving in, and to me, it always been the seat that you occupy, there's no greater calling than to serve others by the way we do things. And by the way, my councilman Gerald Dawson is fully aware, and I spoke to him prior, too. So, again, I understand that you make a lot of decisions and do a lot of things, but the government is designed to do for people what they can't do for themselves. Again, thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Glaze. Appreciate you coming today. Next, number five, is Ms. Joyce Hamm.
Hi, my name is Joyce Hamm. I do have a concern. One of the concerns that I have is that people who are coming to our communities are having more access to our resources than the people that has been here all this time. I'll say for a long period of time, let's take my Aunt Amy. She's 92 years old, and she's in a, she purchased a mobile home and can't bring it home. And I'm trying to figure out, and this has been a month now, that she has not been able to bring her mobile home home. And she's having to jump through all these hoops, but nothing against the Hispanic people, but in our neighborhood, two Hispanics has moved a mobile home into our neighborhood, and it just sat there. No water has been done. The, I'm sure that the septic tank had not been approved because portions of it was on another person's property, of course, his family. And so, I'm quite aware of that. I'm just wondering, what is making it so difficult for people to use their own property just to try to provide a better source of living? That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm.
Hello, my name is Jim Lawton, and I reside at 52 Oyster Street in the Alljoy Community, proudly within unincorporated Beaufort County, near their ever-growing municipality of Bluffton, South Carolina. Thank you, Chairwoman Howard and County Council, for the opportunity to speak. In 1923, my grandfather, Thomas Lawton, and Mr. C.E. Ulmer, went into partnership to develop a subdivision called Brighton Beach. Granddad was born between Brighton and Shirley, South Carolina, today which is known affectionately as Alljoy. You may know this name, came into parlance, thanks to the J.C. All family who built the Alljoy Hotel also in 1923. All family who built the Alljoy Hotel also in 1923. We have grown from a fish camp, summertime community, into a year-round mixture of old families like my own, the Alls, Wiggins, Chisims, Pattersons, Coens, Craps, Smiths, and many new residents who love our little hamlet on the May River. The question my grandfather and I have for council today is, what are your intentions for us? Why is everyone but Alljoy residents so hell-bent to extend Bluffton's pavement all the way to Alljoy? We are incorporated, as I believe council should also be proud that Beaufort County is not one large urban zone, that it still has in its heart a desire to have rural green spaces within its jurisdiction. While we love being near Bluffton to buy groceries, to go to the farmer's market, eat at restaurants, hire local contractors to provide tax receipts for the town, we are very wary of this behemoth, its traffic and population overwhelming Alljoy. So what exactly are the county's intentions for Alljoy? I am most sorry that I gave my blessing years ago to give a privately-held strip of Brighton Beach to the county in exchange for the sheriff's promise of policing the violence to the front row of houses along the beach. I see now how empty that promise was. No deputies, no maintenance whatsoever of the beach except for what residents chip in to do, and nowhere for people of Alljoy to park or sit to take in the May. What are the county's intentions? To ignore us until we plead to be jammed into the urban sprawl of Bluffton? We do not want it, nor do we want the engineering department to promote impervious materials for the pathway we never asked for, or the boat ramp that we do.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Laura Wilson.
Hi, thank you all. My name is Laura Wilson. Eleven years ago, I moved to Alljoy and took a year off to work on a manuscript. During that time, I also met and spent time with many of the older residents and listened to their stories. I also listened to the residents, many who for years have passionately pleaded for solutions to their stormwater issues, ditch maintenance, protection for the May River ecosystem, and their desire to have access to an affordable sewer option. So it came as a huge shock to residents when in June of 2021, the district rep, who was a developer, held a meeting at a fluid person's home with B.C. Engineering telling, not asking the Alljoy community of their plan for concrete paths, ripping out Spartina, which yes, is illegal, boardwalks, and hearing from the crowd a guttural cry, what about our drainage issues? Since that time, the residents have voiced opposition of this project, petitioned against, and spoke with reporters. We've also talked with SEDOT, who said, the pathway project can be a natural pervious surface, which was what we're asking. It's just that Beaufort County doesn't want to maintain it. The residents also have found, excuse me, the residents also have found the RIA grant to bring about the drainage study and met with Beaufort Jasper themselves to receive affordable sewer. But the $2.5 million question is, why is Beaufort County Engineering and the district rep hell-bent to dump an acre of concrete in an area that struggles with drainage and pushing it to be done prior to the drainage study being finished and sewer going in? Something smells fishy. The residents, your constituents, have repeatedly asked, do not concrete Alljoy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Wilson. Next is Sarah McDonald, and after Sarah, if the next person wants to stand in the wings, is Barbara Childs. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sarah McDonald. I'm the Vice President of Conservation at the South Carolina Aquarium. Thank you for considering, as part of your consent agenda, entering into a memorandum of understanding with the South Carolina Aquarium to install SeaRise signs in Beaufort County. SeaRise is a project in the South Carolina Aquarium's Citizen Science App. Citizen Science empowers community members to collect data about what is occurring in their neighborhoods. Anyone can be a citizen scientist. In this case, anyone with a mobile device. SeaRise helps turn photos of flooding, which we all have, into flooding data. These data are open access. Anyone, from students to municipal leaders, can analyze these data. The SeaRise signs serve multiple purposes. First, they raise awareness about flood-prone locations. It's a bright blue sign that says flooding, question mark, with a yellow ruler at the bottom. They encourage monitoring of flooding in the same location over time, and they also encourage monitoring of multiple locations of the same flooding event. They empower everyday people to collect data to affect change. So again, thank you for considering signing the memorandum of understanding with the South Carolina Aquarium.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Childs, Barbara Childs.
Chairman Howard, County Council, amen. I'm here regarding the rezoning of the 86.56 acres on Jennings Road. The current zoning allows 28 dwelling units, 28. The Planning Commission disapproved the first request for a potential 149 dwelling units, up to 258 dwelling units, under the C3 zoning. And then the developer went back, did whatever he did, and came up with a new type of zoning where the potential is 244 dwelling units, and the Planning Commission did disapprove that. It does come to you because you have the final say-so, but considering the current zoning only allows 28 dwelling units, and this developer is wanting 244 units, that's massive, massive amount to put into an area. If you've not driven up Jennings Road, it is a cross from Battery Creek High School. Now, noise concerns will occur, you know it does, when the high school football team is playing out there, it gets loud. If you've never been out there during a football game, try it. Hallelujah. Traffic on a two-road, two-lane road is going to be impacted. They are going to dump out onto Jennings as well as Ramsey, understood, but they're both two-lane roads, so traffic will be an awesome nightmare. I am asking that you not allow the development of this property. I am a retired county worker. I worked with the planning staff from 2000, for 23 years. I did retire honorably, I love it, but we just want you to keep that area the way it is until it can be ready for a dramatic rise in population, but not right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Childs. Next is Collins Doughty. I'm sorry.
Mr. Doughty.
Yeah, Collins Doughty.
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 Hello, my name is Collins Doughty, and Jim Lawton kind of stole a lot of the words that I would like to tell you all, and it's more of a plea. I am a lifelong resident of the Low Country. Our house, my parents' house was the eighth house in Seapines on Hilton Head, when it was nothing but dirt roads. My five kids in the family, we had to commute to Savannah to go to school every day. So I grew up on Hilton Head, but then Hilton Head started changing. It got busier, 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 and it got to the point where I said, no more, and that's when I purchased my home on Oyster Street in Bluffton, Alljoy area, and that was a quarter of a century ago. And I just, I've always loved the Low Country. I'm a writer, I write columns in the papers, and I'm sure a lot of you have read them, just not knowing who I am. And, you know, Jim made a good point about everybody wants to change Alljoy, except the people at Alljoy. And I know that I've heard from previous meetings with, about Alljoy, that yes, a lot of people want this, a lot of people want that. And from all the people I know in that area, then I've lived there for a long time, I don't hear that from any of them. And I'm just saying that our quality of life, Bluffton's changing so fast. I mean, every time I turn a corner, there's, they've either clear-cut an area, going to put up a shopping center, blah, 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 and you know it, and the traffic is horrendous. And Alljoy is like a little bitty piece that we still have that is wonderful, and it's calm, and everybody knows everybody, and everybody, nobody locks their homes, you can go walk into your neighbor's house and get a stick of butter, whatever. And we're just asking to try to keep, give us that space. I mean, it's, it's a prize. It's a prize of the Low Country. It's a piece of Low Country that needs to be saved. We need, we definitely need sewer and our drainage problems taken, thing, the bike path. I haven't seen a bike on Alljoy in months. I see a lot of golf carts, but never many bikes. And if we do put a bike path, pervious surface, not an impervious, pervious surface, and I just, I'm just asking for, help us save this part of Bluffton. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Cecil Door.
Thank you. We left Miami to come and live on St. Helena. We met Clemson people who helped us out because we didn't know what we were doing in 1967. I'm really impressed with entrepreneurship. I got a letter from a nice young man who wanted to buy a lot at Lands End. He had just graduated from Clemson, and he wanted to come and join our eclectic community. And I, I can appreciate someone wanting to come there and live. What we need to know is what kind of rules we have and how we can all follow them. And that means in terms of our small lots, at one time, you couldn't build on them because you couldn't put a septic tank and a well on the same piece of, small piece of property. Water came, so that was possible. But what we need from you is to know what kind of things can go on in our area. It's nice to rent your property if you're not going to be there for a while. That's not my problem. I appreciate the young men that, I don't know them, but that are entrepreneurial. That's, that's a really nice thing. Today, my butterfly plants were totally removed from my property, and my fence was to come down because a mobile home was coming down Buchanan Road. I am really upset. I'm a tree person, I'm a plant person, I'm a gardener. And they did not contact us to ask us, they're a 90-degree angle, there is no right-of-way. So what do I do? They're going to take my fence down. Well, my fence is sorted down because a lot of people have run into it. But what I'm saying is, there are supposed to be five mobile homes coming into Captain Rojas Road, and they're all going to come along there, and they need, they need permission. So we have some problems. So maybe you can help us solve them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Marshall. Or is it Erica Marshall? Erica Marshall?
Mrs.
It's a woman, I'm sorry, Erica. Mrs. Marshall.
Erica Marshall, thank you, council members, for having us here tonight regarding the Lands End community and proposed development. Been there about as long as she has. Yes, we have teeny-tiny little lots. My concern for the area is that Beaufort County specifically, Public Works and the Roads and Signage Department have been neglectful. Lands End is heavily marketed. Fort Fremont has Facebook pages. Eat, sleep, play, do whatever you want in Beaufort County has things. They are all advertising our quiet little neighborhood. It is no longer what I would consider a passive park, which was the original designation of Fort Fremont. But my concern is that, yes, we've got tiny little lots, and yes, people are doing a great many things on them, private residences, rental houses, whatever. But my concern is with the neighborhood impact and the fact that Beaufort County specifically, Public Works and other departments are ignoring us. Actively marketing the fort brings garbage. It brings people that are there beyond what the fort should be operated in, and those are the dawn-to-dusk hours, completely not enforced. There's garbage, there's trash. I do turtle patrols, citizen scientist, as was mentioned earlier. Complete disregard for shorebird stewardship. But beyond that, there's a negative impact of people on the roads, and the signage, particularly stop signs, are not being maintained properly by Beaufort County. There are stop signs that are inconsistent with any other stop sign in our county, and even at Lands End. They are not placed at crossroads. The roads are improperly marked. We don't know if it's a one-way or a, what do we call, dead end? We know you've got the ability. I've been in touch with people like Neil Desai, and I'm talking the past 10, 15 years. Neil Desai, John Miller, Thomas Hayward, Darren Allen, and then the guys that are not in the offices, like Mr. Cox and Mr. Hayward, who has replaced our stop signs repeatedly, and they've given up. Additionally, with impact, negative impact to the area, where are people that do these rentals taking their garbage? Are all these people that are proposed to come in campers to Lands End going to be given a permit? Are they going to be signing up with one of our local entrepreneurs that does sanitation services? But, you know, if you can't go to the dump to dump your garbage, and you take it to the fort and put it in the bin there, and then it washes out on the beach because the county's not doing anything with it, that's an additional negative impact. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. All right, did anyone sign up late for public comment that we know of? No? Okay. All right, we will go on. On our agenda next is liaison and committee reports. I'd like to start with the people who are online, Councilman Passamit, Councilman McAllen, and Councilman Cunningham. Do you have any liaison reports?
Nothing for me.
Okay.
I do not. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll start with others for liaison reports, starting-
Chairman.
At the, we'll start with you.
Okay.
And then Tom, Tom and I both attended.
Chairwoman, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Last week, I had the opportunity to be at the airport's boards meeting, St. Helena, and Phase One of the terminal build-out is going very well. We had the opportunity to meet a sophomore from Auburn, he's a summer intern, Win Alsco, and he wants to find out if he wants to get into aviation somehow. And is John Rembold here today from the airport? John, thank you. I have been on this board for two and a half years now, and I got to commend you, your staff, and the board for the work you do for communicating to the community all that's going on, and it's vast, many moving parts, but to get these kids, these young kids, these young adults that want to come back and do internships, congratulations with that. It's fantastic. Last week, Councilwoman Brown and I met a young kid that graduated. He is here now full-time, living here. His name is Nick Desai. He graduated Hofstra, political science, and he says he wants to be like one of us. You know, I'm going to tell you, the kids are, the youth of our high school and our colleges, when they come back here, they want to get involved because of the work that we all do together, and I got to tell you, I think that's fantastic.
Anything else?
Sure.
Remember how many items we have on the agenda tonight?
Stormwater. I had the chance to go to a stormwater board meeting last week at the sheriff's station, and I heard Mark- And I heard Mark Feinberg and his incredible team, staff. But I had the chance to meet Mr. Lawton and that group from Alljoy. So again, the work we're doing together, this staff led by Jared Fralix, is doing tremendous work in our community, boots-on-the-ground, retrofitting our stormwater and drainage. And I gotta tell you, I'm proud to be part of that group as well. So tonight, I think it's three-for-three on some good reports here.
Thank you. All right. Councilman? Nothing. Okay.
There is quite a few things from the Finance Committee that's coming up on the consent agenda, mostly housekeeping items that need to be done here by the end of the year. We had a Finance Committee meeting at the start of this committee meeting, so thank you all for who attended that. And again, I think that's all that I've got on my end.
Real quickly, as Tom Re said, we both attended the Stormwater Committee meeting last Wednesday, and Mr. Feinberg wanted us to put forth a motion. But I was told by our chair that we can't do that tonight. We'll do that at the public facilities meeting. Okay, community meeting.
Ms. Tavernick?
So as usual, I'll give a short report on School District, although there are four of them here. They could give it. But I thought it was a very good meeting. I was watching it about the Avid elective courses. Ms. Strados did a great job and the others. And for those that don't know, that's advocating via individual determination. It was at Beaufort Middle School. Now it's going to Hilton Head High School. And it's really very interesting, and it's to prepare students for college readiness. So if you have the opportunity to watch the School District video, that was there. Custodial maintenance, they had 665 custodial inspections district-wide. Average score, 85.6. I think that's very commendable. Good job. And they are 99.48% spent of 2019 referendum funds and 48.8% spent of 2023 funds. And of course, Tanya Crosby gave a budget update, which is, your budget's on today. So thank you for coming. We appreciate it. And the other thing I have, and I brought this to share. Alice and I went to the Emerging Leaders. And I want to congratulate Jared. This was his vision. The Emerging Leaders Program was established in '21. It focuses on career development, relationship building, and community service among county employees. In other words, grow our own. It provides engagement opportunities to attract, develop, and retain leaders in our government. This year's theme, which Brianna Plinkenberg gave very enthusiastically, was "Success is like a pair of jeans. One size doesn't fit all." I thought that was really cool. And so I want to thank Jared and Brianna Kimberley Rumsey and Chris DiJulo Cook. It was a great group of people. Are there any emerging leaders sitting with us today? If you stand up. I know some of you are. Come on. Really? Okay, there were like 80 people there, and they had great speakers. So I'll leave this if anybody wants to see it.
Ms. Bartholomew?
Don't have a lot to report. I did attend our second meeting of the City of Beaufort Waterfront Advisory Committee today at 3:00. We got the preliminary report back from the engineer regarding the status of the waterfront park, and there's a lot of work left to do. They just got it back over the weekend, so I think we're gonna be getting that report to be able to digest it here soon.
But there will be a water festival, right?
There will still be a water festival. Absolutely.
All right, Councilman Dawson?
Madam Chair, I don't have anything to report.
Okay, all right. Moving through, we have, I'd like to entertain a motion. I hope everyone looked at the consent agenda. It is attached to our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve in a second the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilman. And then second by Councilman Lawson, a long list of things, 19, 20, 21 items on the consent agenda. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing no discussion, by show of hands, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Aye? And that is unanimous. All right. Next, we will go to ordinances for readings. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Tavernick.
This is an opportunity. We have 11 ordinances and 16 resolutions. So if you don't want to stay, this is your opportunity to get up and leave. Starting today and going forward, I've asked our clerk to counsel. We will show each ordinance or resolution on the screen so the public will know what we're talking about. I'm well aware that some public members don't read, like today's packet's 1,044 pages long. Did anybody read that on the audience? Oh, Felice, okay, good. But for everybody else, we're going to put up here, we're going to put up here the ordinance as I speak. And then I'll ask council members, when they want to move to approve the motion, they'll say, "I approve the motion as read and as shown on the screen." We're gonna make it a little more formal. So I'm gonna start with 2025/35. You can all see it? It's an ordinance to provide for the levy of tax for school purposes for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and to make appropriations for said purposes. The vote at first reading on May 27 was 10-0. The vote at second reading with public hearing was June 9, 10-0. And I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Mr. Dawson moved to approve the motion as read and shown on the screen. Mr. Bartholomew seconded it. Okay. So any comment? I mean, this is the third time we've dragged you here. So I'll recognize the School District people. If you wanna stand up. Everybody's happy that you came again. Thank you. Any council member have a question? I think we've tuned this one up pretty much.
I just have a comment. I'm glad the agenda item is closer to the top today. Y'all don't have to wait. Thank you all.
Okay, so I'd like a vote to approve... Oh, I'm sorry, Tanya, go.
Does this include a public hearing this evening, or is...
We already did the public hearing.
We did a first reading and second. Okay, great. Thank you.
But if you'd like to comment, feel free.
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and I'd like to vote to approve Ordinance 2025/35 as seen on the screen. Show of hands, please. Thank you, School Board and School District. Thank you for coming again. I think you're becoming regular members of our council.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanted to note that for the last several years, the School District has brought their proposal, proposed budget to us, and we have overwhelmingly supported it. Y'all are moving forward into fiscal autonomy. I just wanna make that notation.
Not. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to 2025/30. That's, okay. And it's an ordinance establishing a formalization process for Beaufort County historically maintained roads, known as legacy roads, and the execution of any and all associated instruments of conveyance to the county. The vote at first reading and public hearing on June 9 was 10-0. So I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
I move to approve the motion as read and as shown on the screen.
Thank you. Second.
I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Howard made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew seconded. So we have a motion to approve 2025/30. Any discussion by council? On screen. All right, then I will take a vote to approve Ordinance 2025/30 by show of hands. All right, thank you. All right, 2025/31. And by the way, we're doing this, putting it up on the screen for, to increase our transparency for the public, and so you could see, I know I read this kind of fast, so you could see what we're talking about. So 2025/31 is an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the conveyance of right-of-way known as Orange Court, Prince William Drive, and Indigo Woods Court to the town of Port Royal. The vote at first reading and a public hearing on June 9 was 10-0. I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
I move to approve the motion as read and shown on the screen.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Howard made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew seconded. So we have a motion and seconded, and is there council discussion? All right, seeing none, I'd like a vote to approve Ordinance 2025/31 by show of hands. All right, thank you. Oh, boy, okay. All right.
Pardon me?
Yeah, well, because I just lost it on my screen, right? You want me to read that? No, okay. All right, 2025/32. Let's... I'm sorry, what? Oh, was he a no?
He said no.
Oh, all right. Okay. All right, 2025/32 is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of right-of-way known as 16th Street Extension and a related drainage easement to the town of Port Royal. Vote at first reading and public hearing on June 9 was 10-0. I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
I move to approve the motion as read and shown on the screen.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So Ms. Brown made the motion. Ms. Howard seconded. And it's a new process for everybody, so bear with us. So we have a motion and seconded for 2025/32. Is there council discussion? Question, comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a vote to approve Ordinance 2025/32 by show of hands. We have them on screen, too. Okay, thank you. All right, 2025/33 is an ordinance amending Chapter 99 Stormwater Management, Article 2 Stormwater Management, Utility Sections 101 Findings of Fact, 106 Definitions, and 109 Exemptions of the Beaufort County Code of Ordinances. The vote at the first reading and public hearing on June 9 was 10-0. So I'd like a motion to approve this ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
Madam Vice Chair, I move to approve the motion as read and as shown on the screen.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bartholomew made the motion. Mr. Dawson seconded. And I would just like, anybody have a comment or question? Just to comment again, Mr. Bartholomew worked very hard on this with the military, so this is a great, great thing to do. Do you wanna explain it, or do we need to?
I mean, I don't know if we need to go into detail, but Brian, our legal counsel, did a lot of work on this, too.
Jericho says, he's like, no, we don't want to talk about it. Okay. All right, so I'd like to take a vote to approve 2025/33. Show of hands? And they're online. Let me see Mr. Cunningham's hand up? Okay. 2025/34, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a drainage easement located at 15 Suzanne Avenue on Parky Island in Beaufort County, South Carolina. The vote at first reading and public hearing on June 9 was 10-0. So I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
I move to approve the motion as read and shown on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
I'll second it.
Mr. Dawson made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew seconded. Is there any comment from council or question? All right, great. Then let's vote to approve the ordinance 2025/34 by show of hands. They go down the screen. Okay, thanks. All right, now we are on ordinances for first reading. So we have 2025/36. It's gonna go up there shortly. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 14. This is a long time coming, this one. Amending Chapter 14 Animals, Article 2 Animal Control, Section 1427. It's all up on the screen. Has to do with appeal of breed determination, dangerous animals, nuisance pets or livestock, cruelty and neglect, rabies control, dangerous animals not to go unconfined on premises and off premises unless safely restrained, and enforcement and penalties of Beaufort County Code. This is a public hearing, so I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and on the screen.
Madam Vice Chair, I move to approve the motion as read and shown on the screen. I'll second that.
Thank you. So Mr. Bartholomew made the motion. Mr. Reed seconded it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment or address this ordinance? We're open-mic tonight. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a vote to approve Ordinance 2025/31.
I do believe that we're gonna get a presentation since it's the first reading.
Oh, we are?
I believe so.
Who would like to present?
I believe, yeah, I believe Mr. Robinson.
Oh, all right, come on up, Mr. Robinson. I forgot his first reading.
No, I'm not gonna ask the same questions I did at committee. I'll be very brief. So the update to the amendments to the ordinance, there are six areas that we addressed. First was in definitions. So we added a definition. We put adverse weather in there, and there's an impact to that later on. A couple of the other definitions were highlighted. All of that information is in your backup. Everything that was changed was highlighted and underlined, the additions. The things that we deleted or changed from that were stricken through. So all that information is in the backup material. Then we move to Section 1430, which is the determination of breed of animal. So there's some refinement of how we define the breed of animal. Section 1432 was the addition of levels of dangerous dogs. So this is new. Previously, there was one level of dangerous dog. Now there are multiple levels of dangerous dogs that allow for some relief for residents who have their first incident or perhaps had some training for their animals. During committee meeting, there was some discussion about the effective date of that, and we had some conversation about when that should be effective.
Madam Chair, for me. I do actually have a couple of questions on that and a potential amendment to it. So how... I'd like my thoughts, pardon. So how is this statute with the amendment, how is it gonna affect previous determinations beyond the effective date?
So what is, the discussion point here is, when should this be effective? And if we have citizens who have been to court and been deemed, their animals been deemed dangerous, and we change the ordinance now, how are they impacted? So they would be able to appeal the court and come back to court and have the magistrate judge review their case and determine whether or not this was a Level 1, 2, or 3. And depending on that, the position that the judge would make could change for them. So if Mr. Bartholomew makes the recommendation to add that sentence to the ordinance, it would change that back to January 1 of this year. So those cases that were tried from January 1 of 2025 to the effective date of this ordinance would have the ability to appeal. That's a reasonable time to offer that citizens who may have had their animals deemed dangerous, the opportunity to revisit those with the judge.
And that kind of touched on the question. I'm happy to go back and make that effective date January 1, make that amendment here in just a minute. But how is that gonna affect, I know we talked about a look-back period beyond the 2025 for previous determinations that were still impacted.
I think that would be up to the judge if they wanted, if someone wanted to appeal that case to the judge. Adding that to the ordinance allows for them to happen, so previous to that would be up to the court.
Okay, so even if they're outside the window for the appeal process with the court, with the magistrate court?
It wouldn't be included as part of the ordinance, but it would be up to the judge to determine if they wanted to appeal that case.
Okay. Madam Chair, at this time, I'd make a motion to amend Section 1432A to include the language, notwithstanding the date of adoption, this section shall be effective retroactively to include offenses committed on or after January 1, 2025.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All right, made, the amendment to the ordinance is made by Mr. Bartholomew. The second by Ms. Howard. Is there discussion on the amendment?
I have a question.
Mr. Halbert's zipping up here.
I have a question.
Oh, okay, who's that, Larry? All right, Ms. McAllen.
So then the amendment back to January 1 gives anyone with a dangerous dog designation the opportunity to appeal as prescribed in the ordinance. And prior to that... And prior to that, and I know that there are designations that are occurring frequently, going back maybe 10 years, actually. That's up to the... That's up to a decision by the judges to whether the appeal of that designation will be heard. Is that the way we're going forward?
That is not language that's in the ordinance, Councilman McGowan, as I understand it. If you want to... If you want to address that and make it retroactive beyond January 1 of 2025, we'll have to bring back additional language to give it a look back, to give them a chance to appeal coming forth. And we can have that ready by your second reading, and if you make the amendment then, it would still stay on track.
That's kind of what I was getting at, because this, I think this was amended 2022, so maybe a three-year look-back period? That people that didn't have that breakdown in classifications would have the ability to appeal, whether internally or to a magistrate court?
Well, you can make that tonight by changing...
Sorry, but that, prior to the three years that you're now including, people could still appeal to the court. And if the magistrate decided that there was an appealable issue, then he had the ability to hear that case, to reopen it, and perhaps change the designation. Is that right?
We could make it retroactive to whatever period you deem appropriate. And if you want to make it three years, we can do three years. If you want to go back 10 years, we can do that. And you can change that tonight if you want to make it retroactive for that section, going back that distance, whatever distance you think is appropriate.
I was just wondering what the distinction... The benefit of the distinction, going back one year or three years, and then having the other people who fall outside those parameters appeal directly to the judge and have the judge make a decision whether or not the case should be reconsidered. I just don't understand why we're doing it in two different ways, that's all.
I understand. We could look at it. Give me time to talk with Mr. Robinson, and maybe at the second reading, we'll come back and we'll make it that anyone that's had a dangerous dog determination by a Beaufort County magistrate can appeal it for reconsideration and make it just open-ended to cover any dangerous dog determination, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I don't think that these cases are that frequent that it would be an overwhelming issue.
No, I think the right... We can keep this amendment for 1432A, and that would be a separate section that we can work on later.
I'll need time to look at it.
Yeah, that's fine. But keeping this amendment in here would be sufficient for today.
Let's... Let's not make an amendment till I have a chance to look at it, and we'll fix it at the next reading.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my...
You'll withdraw your amendment?
Yeah, I withdraw the amendment right now.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so we're back to the original ordinance?
And one other thing that I noticed, too, 1432 subsection D, it says in the restrictions for a dog classified under Section 1. Should that read Section A instead of Section 1? It might just be a minor typo, just want to make sure.
I'll go back and look and see.
That's fine.
I'll take a look, I made that note.
And the last question I have, this is actually from a constituent. Is there a particular reason why we're putting a 10-foot minimum on the lead for the trolley? This is in a separate section. I didn't know if that was an industry standard or...
Yes, it is. It's under... So what you're talking about is the trolley system and tethering, it's under 1435E, and that's the industry standard for the tether system itself.
Understood, thank you, thank you.
Any more questions? I can move right on. The... So there's a couple of other sections we addressed. It's 1435 and animal cruelty, and that section was the tethering device. And then the... There is a Section 1443, which concerns with the confinement of livestock during a name storm or during adverse weather. So that ties back to the definition we talked about. We worked directly with the Farm Bureau livestock staff and some consultation back and forth to make sure our language was appropriate for that special interest group, and everyone agreed with the language that's there.
I do appreciate that, because it is a concern to the Farm Bureau and the farmers, so we finally have that taken care of.
Yes, we did. We had a stakeholders meeting, we invited all the public and folks that were involved in that, as well as several council members attended that meeting.
I just want to say one more thing. Thank you all for all the hard work that went into this. I know it's a long time coming, but thank the entire staff and team for putting this together.
You're welcome, thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? I thought somebody from the Farm Bureau might be here congratulating you. Anybody? Go ahead.
I'll be happy to step into that role. When I was serving as a magistrate, I specialized in these types of cases. And I'd like to thank everybody for the hard work that they put into this to include all of the improvements that appear to be here, because I think it'll be a better situation for the animal owners and for the magistrates that have to deal with this. So thanks very much.
All right, anyone, public hearing? No, let me close public hearing first. Seeing no one from the public, I'll go back to council. Mr. Glover?
Yes, Sir Robinson, the issue or concern about reentrance for farmers after name storm, and you were supposed to check with Legal at the sheriff's office, have that been...
Yes, sir. We, myself and Legal, we met with the sheriff's department staff, we had some discussion about that, and we found an alternative versus offering reentry passes. There is a large animal rescue team that is sponsored by the animal shelter, so we ask those individuals that have farms and have concerns with large animals during evacuation or storm, if they wanted to become members of this team and help with the care of animals during evacuation, that as members of those teams, they would be able to be issued reentry passes through the animal control department. And that was a reasonable accommodation that we could make.
Just quickly, would that mean that as a farmer, I would have to come and be a part of the team for rescuing, or can I go take care of mine first?
Well, yes, yes. It takes a lot of resources to manage large numbers of livestock. So it's a way to encourage farmers that have this amount of livestock to be part of this team and help us solve the problem as a group.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other council member comment? Anybody online? All right, so I'd like us to vote to approve 2025/36, the ordinance as seen on the screen. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, thank you. And by the way, I want to take one moment to thank our clerk to council, Ms. Brock and her staff. They put all this together at the last moment. I like threw it at her, I don't know, 1 o'clock, whatever time. So thank you for doing it. I think it helps the public read what we're talking about, so increases our transparency. All right, I'm moving on to 2025/37. An ordinance amending the zoning map for 11 acres located on Burn Church Road, and you will see all the numbers there, from T3 Hamlet Neighborhood, T3AN, and T4 Hamlet Center, T4HC, to T3 Neighborhood. And this will be a public hearing, so first I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
I move that we approve ordinance 2025/37 as read and shown on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Passment. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Ms. Howard seconded. Mr. Passment made the motion, Ms. Howard seconded it. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this ordinance? Is the developer here and wishes to speak on this ordinance? Okay, I will close public hearing. Anyone from county council wish to speak on this or ask a question?
And what's the vote say under that on natural resources?
Oh, natural resource was 4 to 1 with one abstention. I'm sorry, I didn't read that. It was 4 to 1 and one abstained. That was at the committee meeting. Anybody comment on council?
Logan, go first. Yeah.
Oh, Logan, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Just because we do have people in the public and people watching online, can we have somebody give the breakdown of what the difference between these zonings are?
Mr. Merchant?
I couldn't hear Mr. Cunningham's comment.
Yeah, I believe he wanted to know the difference between the zoning districts that... So as you remember, this property, it's three different parcels that make up 11 acres, but it's split zone, and the zoning districts don't even follow the current property lines. They follow previous property lines that have been abandoned. And so when the applicant came in to develop this property, they were left with, you know, they wanted to do a similar type of development across the property and were having to adjust things to meet the various zoning districts. And one of the things that we recommended to them, the front portion is zone T4 Hamlet Center, which is a pretty moderate-to-high-density mixed-use district along Burn Church Road. And the rear portion is zoned T3 Hamlet Neighborhood, which basically is single-family and allows a minimum lot size of 65 by 100. And so we recommended, there's a district that sits in between those two intensities called T3 Neighborhood, and we recommended that they rezone the property to T3 Neighborhood. And basically what that does is downzone the front portion along Burn Church Road and upzone the rear portion. They're intent, or they've expressed that they would like to do a single-family subdivision with 50 by 100-foot lots, and that district would accommodate. So I don't know if that... Does that help answer?
Yeah, definitely helps. How many homes would that be able to fit?
Is that... All right, Mr. Cunningham?
He has to follow up, I just couldn't hear him.
How many homes would that allow to fit onto the 11 acres?
The applicant, so basically, it would be how many that... So the minimum lot size is 50 by 100, so it would be how much that 11 acres could yield. The applicant is intending to build 50 or subdivide into 50 lots. That's a similar density to some other developments around there, the WAC, which is a Pulte Development just further up Burn Church Road, and then Tabby, is it Tabby Roads? It's an older subdivision on the corner of Bruin and Burn Church. So it's a similar intensity development as those.
And then my final question, if we didn't approve the zoning, how many homes would the two different zonings allow to be built?
Well, so they, you know, it... They could, with the zoning the way it is, they could do multifamily along the front of the property and then single-family in the rear portion. So they could have as many dwelling units, but it would be more intense along Burn Church Road and slightly less dense in the rear portion. So that's why, as staff, we saw this, you know, it's encouraging the property to be developed more consistently and, you know, single-family, which is consistent with development around there.
I have a question, Chair.
Go ahead.
What was the action taken about the minimum zoning on this?
So the plan... This project, they recommended approval of 5 to 2. So some of the concerns brought up at Planning Commission had to do with the existing, there's two mobile home parks, and the concern about displacement of the residents. But it passed 5 to 2 at the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other question? Yes, Mr. Lawson?
Would you consider this an upzoning?
I consider this even-steven. It's, you know, the front portion is downzoning, and the rear portion is a slight bump in density.
The front portion, what are the current lot sizes allowed there?
They could go down to single-family at 25 by 100 in the T4 Hamlet Center. They could do 2 and 1/2-story multifamily buildings. So there's a lot more mixed-use or multifamily-type development, or very small-lot residential that could occur in that T4 Hamlet Center. So they're more interested in single-family houses on small lots at 50 by 100, so that's why they're requesting this district.
Okay. And so when we do this, the way it was zoned before was you had higher density up front, and then as you got back to the back portion, it was lower density. How does that affect the surrounding property behind this and what they're zoned for?
Well, the property behind there, I believe, is T2 rural. But the difference between what could be built on single-family in the T3 neighborhood, that is 50 by 100-foot lots, and the T3 Hamlet Neighborhood is 65 by 100. So it's slightly bigger, but it's not a big difference compared to the changes that are happening in the front of the property with the downzoning of the T4 Hamlet Center.
Anyone else question or comment?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Cunningham's got another one. Sorry.
He can go first if he wants.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Glover.
No, I'm going to vote against this at this time. I'm not too sure why, but the one thing is that I ask about the current resident and what is going to happen to them, but that's really not a concern of council. But this, looking at this density on this small lot, is kind of troubling. But you said there are similar lots in that area just like this? So I'd like to go visit that so I can get a positive view on what I'm looking on paper. On paper, it looks disturbing, but I want to go see similar lots like this, development like this here in that area. So I'm going to vote no until I see what's there. Thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, back to you.
Yeah, I would... I just, I need a number. I need a number of how many homes could be built if no zoning was changed? Because 2 and 1/2 means only 2 stories. So you also have to have more parking, which also cuts down on how much you can build. So I really need a number to be able to vote on this.
I will say that with the transect zones, you know, our conventional districts have a density, so they might say 3 units per acre, and that's the cap. But with the transect zones, it goes down to what you could fit onto the site. And so really, you know, the applicant has submitted an illustrative plan that has 50 lots, but unless you get an engineer to really kind of work out a lot of possibilities, look at the site, it's very difficult to come up with an exact number with the transect zones.
Would I be right with saying they'd have to add a lot more parking if they did multifamily and built up to 2 stories?
I mean, that is always a factor. The more vertical you go, the more, you know, you have to set aside for parking. So, yeah, I agree with that.
Mr. Passment?
Yes, if there are another comments, I need to read the reasons why we're going to vote for this at first reading.
Okay, anyone else have a comment before Mr.? Yes.
I just have, I mean, this is in my district, and I think that I've heard my folks say that we don't want to increase density, even though I understand it's actually, this is a good compromise. But at this time, I'm probably going to vote against it, just because, again, I look at it as us changing the zoning, which, again, I've stood, I'm not changing zoning. I'm worried about the properties next door that are the T2R, that's rural, that's right next door to this.
All right, anybody else? All right, Mr. Passment made the motion, so he's going to give his reasons for the motion.
Yes, number one, it is consistent with the... It is consistent and furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and the purposes of the Development Code. Two, it is not in conflict with any provision of the Development Code or Code of Ordinances. Three, it addresses a demonstrated community need. Four, it is required by changed conditions. Five, it is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the land, subject to the application and the appropriate zoning and uses for the land. Six, it would not adversely impact nearby land. Seven, would result in a logical and orderly development pattern. Eight, it would not result in adverse impacts on the natural environment. And nine, would result in development that is already served by the public facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Passment. Ms. Brock, I'd like to do a roll call vote, so we are now...
Before you do that, I'd like to just clarify something, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Did Mr. Cunningham get an answer on how many? Did Mr. Cunningham get an answer on how many residences were permitted before this change takes place, and how many are permitted after?
After 50.
It's 50 after.
Before, I have not found an answer.
And do we, are we unable to get an answer?
How many units are there now? How many RVs?
There's between 45 and 50 mobile homes in the existing mobile home park.
And the projected would be 50, around 50. Does that help, Mr. McKellen?
Firefied clearly, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to vote to approve ordinance 2025/37 as read and shown on the screen, and we're going to ask for a roll call vote, please, Ms. Brock.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Passment?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tavernik?
Yes.
The motion fails. Five, six.
Thank you.
May I make a comment on this to the developer that didn't?
The developer's not here.
Whoever is the one talking to the developer, I would recommend bringing forward just the front of the property, that's a downzoning, if they were looking to put something more cohesive on paper, instead of bringing them together.
If I'm correct, the developer cannot come back for six months.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Give them plenty of time to work on it.
All right. All right, thank you. Ordinance 2025/38 is an ordinance amending the zoning map for 86.56 acres located at 98 Jennings Road, you can see the map up there, from T2 Rural to T3 Hamlet Neighborhood and T4 Hamlet Center utilizing the Hamlet Place Type overlay. I'd like a motion to approve this ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
Adam, I move that we deny the motion as read, as shown on the screen.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion to...
Yeah, right.
Yes, you have to, we're voting on putting the motion on the floor, and then you can vote it down. So do you want to put it on the floor?
All right, then I move to approve the motion as read, as shown on the screen for discussion.
Okay. I need a second.
I'll second.
Was that Mr. Glover?
Yes.
All right, the motion's made by Mr. Dawson, seconded by Mr. Glover, and this is a public hearing as well. So we have a motion and second, is there anyone from the public that would like to address this ordinance? Come on up, state your name again.
My name is Joyce Gibbs-Ham, and I took the liberty to take some pictures. I'm going to go ahead and bring it over.
Okay.
The developers, has been denied multiple times coming before the County Planning Commission, the natural resource, and they just recently went to the Natural Resource Committee to bring this to the county council. It is important to note that the developers initially planned to request, initial plan requested 148 houses, and now they're asking for more than 244 houses. Of course, we really don't know. This will cause more harm than good. Climate change, exacerbating environmental harm, as well as excluding the vulnerable population and leading to gentrification and displacement, offering no benefits to the low-income household. Yes, there is a need for more housing, but statistics shows that there's a need and emphasis is placed on low-income housing. But these developers are aiming at the top of the income spectrum, which will cause the most vulnerable to bear the brunt of the housing development environmental impact, driving up the cost and disproportionately burdening the low-income household who lacks the resources to retrofit their homes as well as access more climate-resilient housing. The price of these homes will be out and out, will not, will be difficult to reach for the low-income housing. Building these housing will drive up the cost of how, of homes, rent, and further put the American dream of owning a home out of reach for low-income families, as well as to displace the cost on the government because they're having to subsidize both renting and house, and purchasing of homes in some cases. For instance, Section 8 housing, where they may subsidize and pay a portion of the rent. Let's be honest, these new, newly-proposed development creates a false sense of walkable community. Beaufort has no public transportation system, no rail system. Therefore, the housing development only creates an increase in traffic congestion and elevate the cost of air pollution due to vehicle emission. High island, another concern is heat island, and that is the concentration of building roads, limited green space that will lead to high temperatures, increasing air demand on cooling during the hotter months. The developer's plan does not reduce the reliance on automobile use. Instead, it leads to a higher level of vehicle dependency and increased carbon emission, significantly impacting the natural habitat with loss of formation of, with, with, with lost of forest, wetland, and disrupting the plants and animal habitants, habitat. It contributes to the construction process, I'm sorry, I'm reading, so I'm going to skip that. The industrial admission, traffic, and chemical process impacts air quality, pollutant, and allergens, impacts health and well-being. Relaxing the zone restrictions only promotes the housing development, but it does not guarantee density or environmental friendliness. It puts a strain on the system as it will impact an increase in the generation of solid waste, in addition, which is, in addition, another cost for low-income families, an increase on those families. There's also, it will be, there will also be an increase on the water consumption in reference to residential sanitation, landscaping, and industrial activity. Beaufort County just recently, in December of last year, had high levels of cancer-causing chemicals in the water supply. And with the increase in building homes, as you see in the pictures, there are more development going on across Beaufort County than this one that they're requesting now. I suggest that Beaufort County allow, and I'm talking about in a four miles radius. I suggest that Beuford County hold off on this development as long as they can, because there's actually four different schools also in that area. And I sent around some pictures in reference to one, which is on 7, 170. So there's Robert Smalls, Beaufort High, and Battery Creek School as well. So we're asking that you please don't approve it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Come on up, Ms. Lamarcus.
Where do I begin? Felice Lamarcus. It reminds me of Cherry Point. 244 units on 86 acres. And I ask you again, when did T2 Rural become a bad word in Beaufort County? Environment, I love the birds, the trees. I've never seen a developer come in and not devastate the land. And then when they plant trees and they've complied with all the manuals, we're left with density, traffic, no more painted bountings, no more deer, bad water. I have nothing against Pulte, they're a good developer. I think this is a bad place to do it at this time. Where do you think all the cars are going to go? Robert Smalls Parkway and 170. Where are people working? Are they heading north? Are they going to Charleston now? Are they still going to cross the bridges? So I ask you to look at item one. It's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. We always say that, because all of a sudden, T2 Rural has become a dirty word, and we want the Village Park Place Type overlay. Look at New River Village. Is that what we want this county to look like? I don't. Addresses a demonstrated community need. What is that need? Affordable housing? Workforce housing? Then tell the developer to put up or shut up. 10 units is insulting. Let's do a development for people who work.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public for the public hearing? So the developer is here. Would you like to speak? Come on up. Please introduce yourself.
Joe, I'm Rob Merrick with Pulte Homes. Well, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present this zoning map amendment request for 98 Jennings. The proposal represents more than a change in zoning. It is a thoughtful response to the vision, goals, and responsibilities outlined in the 2040 Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan. As the county's guiding document, it's referred to as the playbook for shaping our future. The plan calls for intentional, inclusive, and sustainable growth. It holds both staff and leadership accountable for aligning decisions with long-term well-being of our communities. This rezoning request embraces that vision. It introduces the Hamlet Place Type overlay that supports walkable mixed-use development and directly addresses the county's stated needed workforce and missing middle housing, housing types that are increasingly vital for the young professionals, military families, and long-term residents. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map, compatible with surrounding neighborhoods, and designed to preserve natural resources while enhancing connectivity and livability. It also includes commitment to affordability and reinvestment back into the local community. We believe this application not only meets but exceeds the criteria for the zoning map amendment and respectfully requests your support in approving a project that reflects the county's values and priorities as outlined in the Comprehensive Plan. This presentation is a comparison of the comments from staff, from staff comments, applicant narrative, organized by the nine zoning map amendment review criteria. Each bullet under the criteria shows the perspective from each document with reference to the 2040 Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan or the action playbook for support. Item one, consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. This rezoning request is fully aligned with the 2040 Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan, which serves as the county's strategic vision and policy framework for growth. The proposed Hamlet Place Type overlay directly reflects the plan's call for walkable mixed-use communities and supports the future land use map designation for this parcel. Conflict with the Development Code or Ordinance. This rezoning request does not conflict with any provisions of the Community Development Code or the Code of Ordinance. In fact, it supports the plan's directive to align zoning decisions with the county's long-term vision. The Comprehensive Plan emphasizes the need for coordination between staff, departments, and elected officials to ensure that the zoning and land use decisions reflect the goals of the plan. The proposed Hamlet Place Type overlay is a tool specifically encouraged in this plan to implement walkable mixed-use development in the appropriate areas. Demonstrates a community need. This application addresses and clearly demonstrates the community need for diverse and attainable housing options. The Comprehensive Plan identifies the lack of workforce and entry-level housing as a critical issue. The proposed development includes a mix of housing types and a commitment to workforce housing, directly supporting the plan's call for eliminating barriers to affordability and expanding house choices for military families, young professionals, and longtime residents. Item four, required by change in conditions. While not driven by a single event, this rezoning is a proactive response to evolving conditions in Beaufort County, namely population growth, housing demand, and the need for efficient land use. The Comprehensive Plan encourages adapting zoning to meet these changing conditions and supports the redevelopment of underutilized land to accommodate growth in a sustainable and inclusive manner. Importantly, the subject property is ideally located within minutes of major employment centers, public schools, shopping areas, and medical facilities. This proximity makes it a strategic site for residential development that supports the goals of reducing vehicle miles traveled, improving access to opportunity, and promoting equitable growth. The rezoning enables the county to respond to current and future housing needs in the location that is already well-integrated into the community fabric. Item five, compatibility with surrounding uses. The proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding land uses and zoning designations, including nearby residential neighborhoods and community facilities. The Comprehensive Plan supports this type of transition between the rural and urban areas through the place-type planning, ensuring that new development complements the character and function of adjacent areas while enhancing community cohesion. Item six, adverse effects on nearby lands. The proposed development is designed to minimize adverse effects on nearby properties. The traffic impact analysis, which was reviewed and approved by county staff, South Carolina DOT, concluded that the overall traffic impact of the proposed rezoning would be very minimal. While mitigation is recommended at one intersection due to other projects, the specific contribution from this project is not significant. Additionally, the development includes environmental safeguards such as stormwater, management systems, open space preservation, and natural buffers. These measures align with the Comprehensive Plan, emphasis on protecting natural systems and managing growth responsibility. Item seven, logical and orderly development pattern. The rezoning supports a logical and orderly development pattern by placing higher density near existing infrastructure, schools, and roadways. The Comprehensive Plan promotes this approach in its advocacy for walkable, connected neighborhoods, and strategic use of the plan types or place types to guide growth. The proposed layout reflects these principles and contributes to the cohesive community fabric. Item eight, adverse impacts on the natural environment. The development will comply with all county environmental regulations, including significant civic and natural resource protection areas. The Comprehensive Plan prioritizes environmental stewardship and resilience, calling for the development of property that protects water quality, wetlands, and wildlife. This proposal meets and exceeds those expectations. And number nine, adequate public facilities. The site is well-positioned to serve by existing public infrastructure, including roads, water, and sewer. The Comprehensive Plan supports development in areas where public service can be efficiently extended or already exist. This ensures that growth is fiscal, responsible, and sustainable. So as demonstrated, this rezoning request has been carefully evaluated against all nine zoning map amendment review criteria and has been shown to meet or exceed each one. It is consistent with the 2040 Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan, aligns with the future land use map, and supports the county's vision for sustainable, inclusive, and well-connected communities. The proposal introduces a walkable mixed-use neighborhood that addresses the county's urgent need for workforce and missing middle housing, while preserving environmental integrity and minimizing traffic impacts as confirmed by the approved traffic impact analysis. It also includes meaningful commitments to affordability, civic space, and reinvestment back into the surrounding community. We respectfully request your approval for this zoning map amendment, so we may, we may move forward with the partnership with Beaufort County to deliver a project that reflects the values, priorities, and long-term vision of the county. priorities, and long-term vision of the county.
Mr. Merrick, I have to awkwardly have a moment for housekeeping. We're coming up to 8 o'clock, so we'll need a motion to extend our session past 8 o'clock. Ms. Brown makes a motion to extend past 8.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard will second. All in favor, raise your hand. I know everybody doesn't want to stay, but we're going to do that. All right, Mr. Merrick, continue.
I'm good. I'm open for questions if you have any questions.
Anybody else, like attorney or anything?
We can ask a question?
Yeah. About to extend. The vote to extend? Would you raise your hand, please, if you want to vote to extend? Mr. Cunningham. Okay. One thing before, Ms. Brown, before you do it. Mr. Merchant, would you talk about staff recommendation? It's on the AIS, and maybe you can enlighten us with that.
Are we closing the public? Yeah, are we closing the public hearing?
Oh, no, I wasn't going to close it yet.
Still a public hearing?
All right. No, I'm not closing the public hearing yet. Oh, okay. So you don't have anything else to add, Mr. Merrick?
No, ma'am. I will say there is one thing that has been brought up a couple times, and it is regarding the density. So we've heard, excuse me, so we've heard that now a few times through here. Based on the original, we were using the differences between the place-type overlay and the C3 NMU, which is surrounding this property on three different sides, was the original proposal that we came up with. That was brought up before, we'd come before this before. Part of that recommendation was to move forward with the place-type overlay, which was in line with the Comprehensive Plan. So that's where the place-type overlay has come into this. With the place-type overlay, it does allow for additional density, bonus density, by utilizing the place-type overlay. So with that place, that is how we got to this point at this time. And as far as the traffic, yes, the traffic was, we were the first ones to go through the ordinance change when it came to the traffic study on the TIA. By doing that, they identified nine intersections that were studied to be able to, for this project, and that's where they came up to the term that the project had very little impact on the overall, on the overall community itself.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment during public hearing? Come on up. State your name and address and go for it.
Yes, my name is Herbert Glaz, and I appreciate the challenge that you all have observing your capacity for 20 years. The first situation I had to deal with was Delwell. And Delwell, after dealing with that, was very successful. You know, I listened to my constituents when they were going to do Habisham. The vote for Habisham was 10 to 1. I was the odd ball. I did not vote for Habisham. Habisham, then, is the best thing that has happened in Beaufort County. One of the nice, great developments. I say to you, I'm 74 years old. I didn't go abroad or came back. I lived in Beaufort all my life. On the area they're speaking about now was farmland. Time has changed since then. We had a death, or someone got burnt up a few years back, a couple years back, and they brought the body there in that particular area. It's a tree, it's a tree area, and I'm afraid to even travel it at night in my car because if something happened, I don't know what'd go down. I don't know the developer from Adam Housecat. But the situation is this. When people have done what they can with their land and utilized the best of their ability, and things have changed, a change is going to come. Whether it happens to this council or not, a change will come. To have that development there with what they're trying to do, enhance that particular area. We have people complaining about certain situations in the area. If they are there, you negotiate with them to do this. We are the lead in this area. We need this in our community, we need that in our community. Allow the development to do that in your particular area, to improve the situations. We ask for speed bumps in certain areas. Things are going to change. And what you have to do is make decisions that is best for the people in the area, the county, look at job, and everything else. We talk about affordable housing, this and that. But if someone else decides, I want to develop, get that land, and put a big cement company out there, nothing you can say. You have Ramsey Road, and you have Jennings Road. You have Vatirkey School, it's true. The question is, what do a person do with their land? Let it sit there for all these years? Why some people go abroad and come back home and want to make these changes? I say to them, look at the plan. But one mistake I made, and I can say it again, when I made the mistake when I voted against Habisham. The community now embrace it, and they love it, and they care about it. Things can happen when you negotiate. So all I'm saying is, please, do the right thing. Nothing but trees out there, that's all it is. You have more people that want it but don't want to say anything, but I'm here to say I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Loretta Allen Millett, and I have property at 6 Ramsey Loop in Burton, and I am opposed to Ramsey Road development because why would we let develop something in our neighborhood where people on Ramblin' Road, just right around the road, pay Beaufort County stormwater fees? And you look on Ramblin' Road, there is no ditch, no nothing. When it rains, when my mom died a couple years ago, when we called the ambulance, the ambulance had to stop at the end of the road and push the gurney to the house to push her back because they couldn't get up in the road. So if you don't live in my neighborhood, I don't need somebody coming in, developing right behind my house and making my property go up. When you don't live in my neighborhood, you can't say that it's going to be good because of the neighborhood. You don't live in the neighborhood. If my property value go up or down or however, if I got to pay more Beaufort County taxes because somebody want to develop a three-story house, $300,000 or whatever, but my single home right here don't mean nothing, and I've been in this home all my life. So if you don't live there, yes, we're going to have changes, and we're going to do this and we're going to do that. But right now, it's been put down two times. I don't know where I got this letter from, but it was in my church door. It says, "Community update on Ramsey Road development plans to come out tonight." So I don't know about all the other things that was on the agenda, but I do need to speak for Ramsey Road development. Please don't approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else for public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close public hearing. I'd like Mr. Merchant to speak because I noticed you had a staff recommendation.
Yes, I mean, so in evaluating any zoning map or zoning map amendment, the first thing we do is we consult the Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map. And so this particular site is neighborhood mixed use, but it also has a hamlet place, is it hamlet? I'm sorry. It's getting late.
Please tape over there.
Yeah. So you have the future land use map, which is sort of like a zoning map, but it's a little more vague and a little, you know, it's basically the framework that the zoning map is based on. But in addition to the future land use map, we have a place-type overlay, which has certain areas around the county where it recommends more mixed-use communities. And this particular site qualifies as that. I believe it was a hamlet place type. And so what that does is it pushes, you know, if an applicant wants to upzone in that area, they should follow the, there's a procedure in the Community Development Code called the place-type overlay. And so for a hamlet place type, there's a table that gives some indication of the mix of zoning districts that should be adopted to make up a hamlet. And so the applicant, that's why they've recommend, you know, why they're requesting to change the zoning from the T2 rural to part of it being T4 Hamlet Center, the other portion being T3 Hamlet Neighborhood, according to that. And so they met the requirements of that. Our recommendation was, you know, certainly, they meet the requirements of the place-type overlay and the Comprehensive Plan. They also have submitted a draft development agreement, and they've now formally submitted at the staff. And one of the significant features of that is the different portions of it address affordable housing. And so our recommendation, if council does want to move forward with this, is that they work with, you know, the housing community to determine what are the needs of this area and are they adequately being addressed in this development agreement, or what options there are. So that's, that's kind of a very quick summary of staff recommendation. And this did, of course, go to Planning Commission, and they recommended denial of this application, I believe it was 7 to 1 at their May meeting, so.
Thank you. So Ms. Brown, you had a question or comment?
I had a question from Rob. After Mrs. Lamarcus' comments, because we went through Cherry Point twice, no once, but twice, and they wanted to put on the 71 acres, like 400 homes. So my question is this, 86 acres, how many homes do you want, do they want to build?
244 units.
On 86, but wasn't it less than that before? Am I mistaken?
It was.
It was?
Yes.
How much less?
244 with this application. The previous one was 184.
184?
Yeah.
So why did that change?
Well, before, they didn't use the place-type overlay, so they just went for a straightforward rezoning. And council had, that went to first reading in 2024, and it failed at first reading. And so they went back to staff, and we recommended that they do the place-type overlay because that was consistent with the Comprehensive Plan.
But they'd asked for a development agreement, so can't we negotiate this in development agreement?
I mean, those are the types of things that council may want to think about if they are moving forward. I mean, that is something that could be negotiated.
And 184, what kind of homes are there? Condos, apartments?
Well, the applicant could speak to that, but this is a mix, what they're proposing is a mix of townhouses and single-family houses.
Townhouses and single-family?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, I guess I have a few questions. The current zoning, how many homes is allowed for on the 70-some acres?
144, I think there's.
You mean with the T2 rural?
With the zoning currently in place, yes.
So there's 86 acres, so it'd be 27 houses.
So they basically want to add 210 homes, roughly.
Yeah, that would be the difference between the two.
With 10 workforce housing.
That's in the draft development agreement.
And then I have a couple more questions, sorry. Pulte Homes is the same developer, Mailem Bluff, which was right next to Cherry Point, and then we also had the rezoning come for us in front of Mailem Bluff as well, which we turned down. And they offered a lot more workforce housing than this 10. And that was definitely public knowledge, that this council voted that down overwhelmingly. Just putting that out there as information. What's the starting price value of these homes?
I think the applicant would have to speak to that.
Mr. Merrick, what's the starting price for these homes?
We're going with the Syntex-branded home, which is geared for your entry-level buyers, what you will see in this. So to answer that question, whatever market rate is, the idea that we went with the town homes on the front side was be able to continue to hopefully reduce some of that price to be able to get more entry level. But you asked the question, was it town home, a single-family? There's a blend between town home and single-family detached property, so that's where the blend comes in play. But again, there'd be market rate price points, but the ideal position is to be, you know, lower, high 2s, 3s, somewhere in that ballpark. But that is, you know, that's market rate at this point.
If it were today, what would the market rate be?
I mean, it depends on.
Low 3s.
It could be low 3s.
Low 3s, okay. Mr. Cunningham? Anything else, Mr. Cunningham?
Uh, yes, actually for you, Tab. Did the referendum pass in November?
What?
Did the referendum pass in November?
No.
Okay, just making sure I didn't miss anything. Thank you.
Was that a trick question?
Yeah.
No, I just figured it was public knowledge.
I'm stunned. Okay. Anybody else online? Joe, Larry, any comment or question?
Yeah, I have a question. I just want some clarification, I just want a clarification again on Mr. Cunningham's question. I heard 28 homes on the existing, on the existing zoning. I heard 144 somewhere in there. Did I hear that number, 144?
They originally were going to apply for like 180, and they changed it to 244.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay. Okay, but the 28, and the price, price is about $300,000, and we're putting in of the 244, 10 of 4,000. What's the AMI on that? Does anyone know?
What's the, Mr. Merrick?
What's the AMI on that?
What's the AMI for the affordable housing?
What percent?
What range?
Sure, DA, it was put in there between 80 to 120 that we had in there. But based off of that, you're looking at one portion of that, and this is where I think we could dive more into the development agreement. There were three different aspects of that. There was initial deposit, entry level, or, sorry, deposit assistance that we were providing for first-time homebuyers, military housing, and things like that, that was also included in that. And then there was a repair arm of money being given back into a fund that the Beaufort County Housing Trust, Beaufort Jasper County Housing Trust, would be able to distribute back within a certain perimeter, to be able to get back into the community for repair funds and things like that. So it is, it is based on that. The five, where we came up where you're saying just 10, that five actually came up with Mint Farms, which is approximately right, almost across the street from this property. I was asked to take a look at that and how they approached it, and that was by Madam Howard. And so by that, in the Mint Farms, they allocated five deed-restricted properties in Mint Farms. So basically, we took from Mint Farms and doubled that from what they did over there, implementing also the additional. It comes out to be approximately a million dollars, give or take a million dollars, in community enhancement back, that were given back.
What's the relationship you have with the Housing Trust Fund?
Well, we had to figure out, as we're working through that, it can go, it doesn't have to go through Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust, but we wanted someone that could be overseer of that, be able to help oversee when it comes into the deed-restricted, be able to help oversee and implement the funding out into the community, things like that. So Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust seemed like a good, you know, opportunity to be able to partnership with them. It was someone that, you know, of course, that works with the county as well, so we thought that would be a great partnership.
All right, other questions?
Yeah, sorry, I still don't understand what, I still don't understand the nature of the relationship, but that's okay, it doesn't matter.
Ms. Howard, which project is she referring to?
I don't think the county wants to.
When was that?
I don't think he has a relationship yet, correct?
No, we don't have a relationship yet. That was an, if you've got someone better that you'd rather utilize, you know, we're more than happy to look at that option.
Mr. McCollum, they don't have a relationship yet, they would pursue it.
Okay. Well, that's the answer I was seeking. Thank you for finding it.
Okay. Mr. Atkinson, you want to make a comment? I see you meandered up here.
I did, thank you. So I just wanted to address the AMI question specifically. So two wage earners, the 2024 AMI at very low 50%, puts the house income at $40,400. Low is 80%, two wage earners at $70,500. Average is 100% of AMI, that's $90,000 a year, and moderate is 120% AMI at 180, or, excuse me, 108,000. To put this in context with affordability, I ran some math with a mortgage calculator, assuming a 15% down payment. A person who is 100, or a household with two wage earners at $90,000 AMI, 100%, can afford approximately $2,200 a month if you take 30% of that, which is what banks are looking for. PITI, assuming a 15% down payment, puts that at about a $300,000 loan. So I do want to say that what's on the table tonight, or what's on the agenda tonight, is a place-type overlay, and affordable units is really not part of that particular discussion. Affordability and the number of. Affordability and the number of units, and how council wants to address that, if you do, is part of the development agreement process, which we are very early in the process of. We have the application, it has not been deemed complete, staff will have to work through that, and then we will bring that forward. If there is an interest in doing that, you have a couple of options, whether you want to defer tonight and pair that up later at first reading, or vote tonight and pair that up at second reading, or not even take it up at all. So I just wanted to add that context and provide those numbers as it relates to AMI.
I had a comment, two wage earners, but a family of four?
It really doesn't say how many.
Two wage earners.
It's wage earners, 15 years of age or older in the house. Typically, when I look at it, I do the two adult wage earners. The one wage earners about 20% lower than the two wage earner, it doesn't double it. But that, that's your average numbers, that's sort of how that lays out and what it really looks like when you start talking about affordability. Thank you.
Let me chime in if I may. I've got several, several issues, but I'm only going to address one tonight. We, as a council, we have been dealing with and trying to address affordable housing for years now, compounded by workforce housing. And for our developers in Beaufort County to come forth with development agreements and zoning map changes that actually includes, in this particular plan, out of 244 homes, we're only talking about 10 homes for affordable housing, or workforce housing. That's, that's, that's only a drop in the bucket. That doesn't even speaks to trying to address our shortage and our need for workforce housing, let alone affordable housing. So if, so if we're going to, as a council and as a county, if we're going to actually address and get on top of the necessity for workforce housing in connection, in conjunction with the affordable housing, then these developers have to bring forth more than what they're offering. 244 homes, townhouses, single-family homes, 10 of them are only workforce housing. That's... I said, no, please.
Yes, okay. Anybody else comment, question?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair. If I may, I've listened to everybody in the room tonight, these same conversations come up at just about every parcel that goes for an upzone, and I think we've been consistent that anything that, a map amendment without a development agreement requesting an upzone is a no. But we have an opportunity here tonight. The things you were talking about are part of negotiations. There's a development agreement that's been submitted, it has not been deemed complete yet, we haven't reviewed it, we voted earlier today, coming out of executive session, to find an attorney to help us review that. I think the responsible thing to do, it can still be a no vote at the end of the day, but I think the responsible thing to do is to look at the development agreement and give this process a time to play out and hear from the community, see if we can address any of the concerns inside of the development agreement before making a decision here today. And with that being said, if there's no further comments from the rest of this body, I would make a motion to actually defer voting on this, and allow an opportunity for it to sync up with the development agreement at a special call meeting.
I'd like to second that.
All right, Mr. Bartholomew, we made a motion to defer this ordinance, and Ms. Brown seconded it. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Lawson.
Yeah, I'll, and again, listening to everyone as well, and you look at the, you look at the facts that we're up against, the only way we provide more affordable housing, or workforce housing, is if we increase the number of units. And that's something that this council has not had an appetite, is, is, is not increasing the zoning or upzoning anything. So again, it puts us in a very difficult position, and landowners out there, and Mr. Glaze, you made a very good point, that a lot of people, that are local people, have sat on their properties, have paid for it, have worked the land, and now they're getting ready to go sell it, and they're finding out that we're not allowing the number of units, which then doesn't give the property as much value as it could. So we're stuck in that position, it's almost like a dog chasing its tail, because we want more workforce housing, but we don't want to increase units. So I, I think that your motion for us to at least explore some ideas is a good one, that we can push this off and see if there is a compromise someplace.
Other comments, Ms. Howard?
I really don't see any value in not voting tonight. We still would have, I don't see what the deferral gets us. I'm looking toward our county attorney to see if, what, by deferring it, are we just kicking the can down the road? This is just my opinion. We have a draft development agreement.
You do have a development agreement, which is a separate process, and you can marry it up or not marry it up. At some point, it will marry up. Whether or not they will keep the development agreement in play, if you don't vote on the zoning map amendment as far as approval, then that's a question that we'll have to see what happens after the vote. But to defer the vote on this for the first reading, the only value you get in that is if it was to suffer a positive vote, as far as, if you voted to approve it, then you could delay the second reading until the development agreement is going to have a public hearing, and you hear what the public comment is on this, and you have discussions related to that development agreement. But the risk is, if you take a vote without deferring it tonight, and it doesn't get a vote to pass, then the zoning map amendment is gone for a year. Okay? So if you want to talk about the development agreement, you should either vote for the amendment tonight, and you have two more opportunities to disapprove it if you're not in favor of it, or vote along with Councilman Bartholomew's motion to defer it, to give you time to explore development agreement and get some advice on that. Whether or not there's any benefit, or if there's more detriment, that's a political decision that you have to decide amongst yourselves.
Thank you.
I was looking at the.
I have a question, excuse me.
Who is it?
Did I understand you say if you vote to defer this, the development agreement expires?
No, sir. If you vote to defer the first reading to a future date, that gives you time to work through the process of the development agreement and have discussions amongst yourselves in a public hearing, to hear from the public, and to negotiate with the developer to see if you can reach more suitable terms or acceptable terms to council if they're interested in the development agreement.
Well, okay, in consideration of all I've heard tonight, and the fact that there's... Does Pulte already own the property?
Nope.
Does Pulte already own the property?
Merrick, Rob, does Pulte own the property? He wants to know if you're, if Pulte already owns the property.
Pulte does not own the property right now.
So the family still owns it. So based on everything I've heard, I would like to see if there's any way this development could complement the community, and I would support Mr. Bartholomew's motion to defer.
All right, I was looking at the page 316. The staff recommends approval under the conditions the applicant work with county council through a development agreement to best determine the need for affordable housing, which is what we all heard, supports Mr. Lawson, Mr. Bartholomew, and they also recommend no alterations to the standards. So, I mean, I'm in favor of looking at a development agreement for this. That's where I stand with that. Oh, Logan, yes, you got your hand up?
I mean, I have no problem talking about development agreement, but before we even go on this, we need to set realistic expectations for him.
Right.
I don't see any of us allowing 200, an increase of 217 homes, one. Two, we know 10 homes, that's, that's crazy. I mean, you'd be talking 75 to 100 to even make this an option for us to discuss. So if that's something that they're not even interested in, are we just wasting time? I have no problem negotiating, but if that's the offer they put forward, that's not even an offer to get somebody to a table, especially when they've had other people put other offers in front of us that were more enticing than that, and we already voted no. Two of them.
And I agree with you, I think they've heard us loud and clear, and I think that you're right in everything you just said. And I think that it's out there, our dissatisfaction with the current situation, and there's going to have to be great improvements made. So give them a chance to do it, if not, no harm done. It's just a matter now that the people that own this land will not have a purchase unless someone else comes in with a different development plan, that's all.
So let's restate your motion, please.
I would, I would point out, before you start to vote, that the developer, the applicant, was given the opportunity to defer this and not have the first reading tonight, and they declined that offer. They wanted to have the first readings, what the indication was. Now, that may have changed tonight, we can ask the applicant what their position is, but that was, the question was put to them, and they declined that.
You want to speak to that, Mr. Merrick? On up. Please tell us your name and who you are.
Thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Walter Nestor, and I'm with the law firm of Byrne Foreman, and we're assisting Pulte, the applicant, with the development agreement. And the proposal is to sync up the, the application for a place type overlay rezoning with the development agreement, but I don't recall that there was a request to defer it tonight. There was a request to move forward at Natural Resources with the place type overlay rezoning. And, and that resulted in a, in a vote by Natural Resources to recommend approval, has been written here, but we're not, we're not opposed to a deferral, but I don't see that it's our choice.
It's not, I was just letting them know that I had asked if you wanted to defer this, to let it marry up, and you declined that offer, is the point I was making.
At Natural Resources, at Natural Resources, but we can, we can certainly, if the council wants to sync us up, we're glad to do that.
Okay.
Chad, an accurate representation of Natural Resources approved this consideration by council?
Natural Resources voted to approve it with the condition that a development agreement be entered into with the applicant, and additional affordable housing units to be offered, and that no alterations to the district standards are allowed in the development agreement, is what the recommendation was from Natural Resources.
And it was 5-1. 5-1, Ms. McGowan.
5-1, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you have something on the table right now?
Yes, would you like me to restate it?
Yep.
Do I need a date certain, or just a special call meeting, Brian?
You can either postpone to a date certain, or indefinitely, and if it's that you want to marry them up, you can make that part of the motion, as far as after the special called council meeting to consider the development agreement.
Okay, and just for clarification, I'll reiterate, maybe state it slightly different, but I move that we defer the first reading of this, this agenda item, in order to have a special call meeting and sync the development agreement and the zoning map amendment together, so that they can be considered at the same time.
I'll second that.
All right, we have an amended motion by Mr. Bartholomew, and seconded by Ms. Brown. Further discussion?
And just to be clear, by syncing them up, that would be after that first special called meeting to consider the development agreement and the discussions.
Chad, I'm confused.
Say what that?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Do we need a roll call vote?
Okay, so if there's no other discussion, I am going to call for a roll call.
I'd just like to make one comment, that the Planning Commission voted to deny the zoning change, and that's what we've got in front of us today.
But I will comment, I watched that Planning Commission meeting.
I was there.
Yeah, well, the first vote was a little bit here, there, they waited for someone to make the motion to deny, and then they had to come back, I mean, to me, it was a little, but, I mean, they did vote 7-1, or whatever, they voted to deny. Please do a roll call, Ms. Brock.
This is on the amendment.
On the amendment, yes.
Got it.
Motion to defer.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Passamit?
Yes.
Sorry, let me turn that on. Councilmember McAllen?
Yes, to defer.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Dawson? Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tavernick?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
No.
The motion passes.
All right, now we have to vote on the amendment, the ordinance as amended, correct?
No.
Nope.
Deferred.
Oh, it's deferred, okay.
Okay, we'll go on to the next one.
All right, we're off with that one. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. All right, I'm going to 2025/39. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of Holly Hill Road Utility Drainage, Signage, and Access Easement Agreement for Holly Hill Road located in Bluffton Township off New Riverside Road. The vote at Public Facilities on June 16th was 8-0, and the public hearing will be scheduled for July 14th. I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance as read and shown on the screen.
I'll move ordinance 2025/39 as read and approved on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Passamit.
On the screen.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. The motion has been made by Mr. Passamit, seconded by Ms. Brown. Is there any comment or question on this one? This is first reading. Anybody? All right, if there is nothing, then I'll take the vote to approve the ordinance 2025/39 as read and shown on the screen. All in favor, raise your hand, please. All right, thank you. And guess what, I only have one more. 2025/40 is an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of an undeveloped portion of Coffin Bluff Road located off Fritpoint Road on St. Helena Island Road. The vote at the Public Facilities Committee on June 16th was 8-0, and the public hearing will be July 14th. Can I have a motion to approve this ordinance as read and shown on the screen?
Some both.
Thank you, Mr. McAllen.
I'll second that.
Was that coming?
No.
So it was made by Mr. McAllen, seconded by Mr. Bartholomew. Any comment on this or question?
Yes, Madam Chairman?
Yep.
Could I have the staff speak to this?
Sure. You know, Jared thought he was going to get away with not speaking the whole night.
Coffin Bluff Road.
We're just happy to see you, you must be so happy today. Yeah, you got to be happy.
Good day in Beaufort County, that's right. So this one is a, a road that we own on Coffin Point, or Coffin Bluff Road, off of Fritpoint Road. We had a right-of-way dedicated to us in 1994, and it makes a horseshoe inside the lotted, platted lots. And the road was constructed, and then there was a, an eyebrow, we call it, a cul-de-sac on the corner, that was never constructed or developed, and now the homeowner owns the three lots that are connected to that eyebrow, and is requesting for that right-of-way to be turned back over, or turned over to private, to him.
Quick question, is there a drainage, stormwater drainage problem in that area?
No, there's no issues, we've checked it out, we don't have any drainage issues or have any plans for improvements to this section.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else question for Mr. Felix or comment? Online? Nope, all right, seeing none. I'd like to have those that are in favor of this ordinance 2025/40, as shown on the screen, please raise your hand if you approve. Thank you. All right, I am done, so Ms. Howard takes the resolutions.
All right, we've got several resolutions, the first one is 2025, 25, a resolution to approve and authorize administrator to execute the third addendum to the MOU with the town of Hilton Head Island and St. James Baptist Church for the St. James Baptist Church relocation priority, which is up on the screen. Did I hear a motion?
Chairman, I do. I move to approve the motion as read and as shown on the screen.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, and we have a second by Vice Chairman Tavernick. By show of hands, all in favor?
We have a question.
You have a question? I'm sorry, go ahead.
What are they, what are they doing here?
Okay, if you, have your packet there, and we also have others here that can brief on it, if you'd like them to come forward. on it, if you'd like them to come forward on this resolution.
This would be Jared again?
Mm-hmm, twice.
All right, he's young.
So this is a third amendment to our original MOU that we have. This MOU speaks to the entirety of the project, basically a term sheet, something we've been coordinating with the town of Hilton Head, and it speaks to essentially the, the land would be the five acre parcel of the new church site would be donated by the town, that the existing church would become ownership of the county through FAA funds that we utilize to help pay for that, and those funds received from the church would be entered back into the project, and then that the county would be the one responsible for the funding. We've talked about the overall cost of the project is $12 million, including those lands costs, the, the town parcel and the church parcel. When you take all that out, the land cost, there's about $3.6 million in cash that is needed funding for the project, and that right now, that's all accounted for. The county has recently bonded $3.5 million towards this project, and all of those terms as described are pointed out in this addendum.
Have any more questions?
Did we lose any of the earmarks from the government action with the new budget?
No, so we have two existing earmarks. Those have been received. They're sitting in our checking account. We have to submit quarterly reports on those. Senator Davis was hopeful to, to go back for another earmark. Earmarks didn't happen in this budget cycle, so we didn't lose what we have, but we didn't gain any additional.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I may.
Yes, Councilman Dawson.
Did we have any communication with the representatives from the church?
Uh, we've talked about this more than one time with, with all the stakeholders, the church and the town. So their, their portion, which is the contribution of their funding received for the existing church building, coming back into the project, they're comfortable with that, as well as obviously where they're planning to move the new five acre parcel. So, yes.
Any other questions? All right, we're comfortable. We had a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor of this? By show of hands, and that is unanimous. Thank you, Jared. All right. The next one is 2025-27. This is a resolution to establish Beaufort County's community development priority list. This is up on the screen. This has to do with the community development CDBG program through housing and urban development. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve 2025/27.
Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Bartholomew. Any discussion? I see no discussion. By show of hands, this resolution, 2025-27, is approved. The next one is 2025-28. It's a resolution. It's up on the, it will be up on the screen, a resolution authorizing county administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Port Royal Sound Foundation for Surface Elevation Table Station Collaboration.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Glover. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Council, Councilman Bartholomew, thank you. Any discussion or questions? All right, by show of hands, 2025-28, resolution is passed. All right, the next one is 2025-29, a resolution to approve the installation of streetlights at Oyster Factory Park.
I'll make the motion to approve 2025/29 as read and shown on the screen.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Tavernick. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Brown. Any discussion?
This is in Bluffton, right?
Mm-hmm.
I think the best part of this is they want to install six streetlights at Oyster Factory Park, and it will be no cost to the county. The town of Bluffton is doing that.
Very good point. All right, and they need it there, too.
It needs it, yes.
Yeah. By show of hands, approval, 2025-29 resolution, and that's unanimous. Okay. The next one is 2025-33, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to pursue, pursue condemnation for portions of parcels as specified in Exhibit A associated with the right of way acquisition, a sidewalk on Stewart Point Road as part of the 2018 One-Cents referendum. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the motion as read and as shown on the screen.
Thank you, Councilman Dawson. Do we have a second?
Second it.
Second by Councilman Glover. Discussion? The neighbors are aware of this, I assume, too. All right. By show of hands, a show of hands for this one. This is for 2025-33 resolution. The next one is 2025-34, a resolution authorizing the annual CPI-based fee adjustments for hangar, storage, and office space fees at Hilton Head Island Airport and Beaufort Executive Airport. Do I have a motion as shown on the screen?
I'll make the motion to approve 2025/34 for the annual fees.
I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Discussion, questions?
I have a question. Is this to increase the fees for hangar, storage, and office space fees at both those airports? Are we giving them permission to do that with this resolution?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. That's my understanding. Any other questions? All in favor of 2025/34. All right. The next one is 20-
I vote, no, I vote no on that.
Okay, a vote. This was not unanimous, a vote no. Any other votes? No, just one. Okay. All right, 2025-35, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a commercial operating agreement between Beaufort County and Pilot Specialties LLC. Do I have a motion to pass this, for this resolution?
I move to approve the motion as read and shown on the screen.
I second that.
A second. I have a motion by Councilman Bartholomew and a second by Councilman Reitz. Do we have any questions regarding this?
I would just remind the public, we already had a presentation by Mr. Rembold at our last meeting, so that's why everybody already understands this.
By show of hands, all in favor? All in favor on the screen, too?
Yep.
Okay. All right, the next one is 2025-36. This is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a commercial operating agreement between Beaufort County and Beaufort Flight Training. Do I have a motion for this resolution?
I move to approve this motion as read and as shown on the screen.
Thank you, Councilman Reitz. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Bartholomew. Discussion or questions? There being none, and by show of hands, all in favor of 2025-36 resolution.
Madam Chairman, I have a word after this item?
Yep.
Yes. Go ahead. Before the next one, or the-
Before the next one, yes, ma'am.
Okay. 2025-37, a resolution to accept an FAA AIP grant in the amount of $1,493, $515 for HXD airfield drainage project, that's Hilton Head, contingent upon final FAA offer.
I move to approve the motion as read and as shown on the screen.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and discussion? Councilman Cunningham?
Uh, yeah, I guess I would just like to add that we went to length of number 29 through 36. They are all grants for the airport that have to be approved because there's a timeframe that we have to meet after they are approved. So I'd actually like to make a motion and amend this to include 29 through 36 and take them as one item.
Great idea.
29 through 36.
I'll second it.
And they are all grants for the airport. We went over extensively in my facilities meeting last week.
Okay. All right, we had a second by Vice Chairman Tavernick. Discussion about consolidating all those? Just to be clear, so we could read the resolution numbers, that would include resolution 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right.
I would just like to again thank Mr. Rembold and his staff for submitting all of these grant applications. They, you know, we don't just get this money for the heck of it. They have to submit all of these, and some of them are in the packet.
It's also my understanding, we have a short turnaround when we do get the word that we got the grant. We have to turn it around really quick. Okay, so we have read all of those resolutions, and we've had the motion and a second. Any other discussion regarding those? By show of hands, all for approval. And that is unanimous, and we-
You have to vote on the main motion now. That was to amend.
That was for the amendment. All right, correct. The main motion was for the first one.
First one, right.
Yeah, which was 30-
27.
Was it 37?
So now you're voting to approve the resolutions 27, I'm sorry, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, and 44.
Okay. Now, do I have a motion? We, we had a, we have, we need a motion.
You just have to vote.
Okay, we still need a motion to approve.
No, you just need to vote.
All right, we're good?
You just need to vote. You've amended it. It included all those resolutions I just read.
All of them. All right. All right. By show of hands. All right, thank you. And if there's no further business, tonight, we are adjourned. Thank you.